And also, just in case anybody is new here, which I see a lot of familiar faces with public comment, we do not have a back and forth between council and public comment, just so you're aware. And if you have a question, we'll direct that to staff and have them research and get back with you for an answer.
No address, just name and town.
Great, okay. Good evening, Mayor LaBarre and Council. My name is Carol Greenstreet. I've been a resident of Woodland Park for 18 years. When I addressed the council in the past, it was to represent Woodland Park's school board, which I served on from 2010 to 2019. We came to address council to report on the use of sales tax as we felt accountable to the council and citizens of the Woodland Park for its use. Tonight, I'd like to address the report given to you at the last meeting about current happenings in the district. My husband and I have three children that graduated from Woodland Park High School. One is an intel officer in the Air Force, two are in full-time Christian ministry. I have deep connections in this district, as I've also worked as an athletic trainer and volunteered. I believe community is important. It is where people with differing points of view, values, and faith come together to create a hometown. Community is where we come together to address not only our needs, but the needs of our neighbors. The public schools are some of the most important pieces of a community. They should reflect the diversity of the community, and this is why we chose public education for our children. Yet, it's difficult to get a read on what is really happening unless we have school-aged children volunteer or are employed by schools. It's not like the roads that we drive on every day. We know there are potholes. Without involvement, it's difficult to see the potholes in the schools. While it seems out of reach to understand what's really going on in Washington, I believe we can and should understand the complexities of local issues. I understand that while you do not have control over the district, you have control over potholes. However, as community leaders, it's important that you're aware of things that are happening, as they have and will continue to impact our community. One of the board members told me he gets so many emails that he cannot read them all. I would estimate in nine years, I received about 12 emails from parents and citizens. At most meetings, no one signed up for public comment. Too many emails impact boardrooms indicate there are potholes. Not following policy in open meetings continues to be an issue leading to increased distrust and parent-community response. It's the actions that create distrust, not the exposing of the actions. One of my children has a five-year-old foster child they hope to adopt. This child will require mental health services for his entire educational years. If not provided, he'll have trouble with learning, and he will likely disrupt classroom learning. It's not his fault, and it's not going to be his parents' current parents' fault. They would likely not choose our schools due to the current attitude about mental health. That's sad for our community. The people addressing school issues tonight are our community. All of us would rather be home with our families. But some of us who attended the last meeting or have become aware of what was said would be pleased if you would let us paint a picture of how we see things in this district. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Craig Johnson.
Counsel, Mayor, thank you for your time. I am a pro-life, gun-loving native of Woodland Park, and I stand against the actions of our school board and superintendent. This community, we, need your help. I have five kids who are students in this district. One of my children has an autism diagnosis and is thriving with the support of numerous staff members. Yes, even a social worker. By the way, that position has been cut from next year's staffing. So far, the amazing teachers and staff in these schools have consistently met the unique needs of all of my children. As our community recovers from recent murder-suicides, including that of an elementary student, the response of this superintendent, handpicked by our school board, was to mock those who questioned him on the decision to revoke future grant-funded mental health services, asserting that the professionals employed at the time of those tragedies were unable to prevent them from occurring. He missed the point, and he's not even a member of our community. He lives in Monument. At the last school board meeting, before voting unanimously to oppose House Bill 23-1003 regarding school mental health assessments, the school board president declared several times that the House bill was a government overreach and that mental health starts in the home. Well, what about the 13-year-old who hung himself under the stairs? What about the homeless camp surrounded by trash and drug paraphernalia, occupied by school-aged children? And what about the home with frequent incidences of domestic violence, with children that are powerless to do nothing but watch? What about the middle schooler who has been repeatedly molested by a family member since she was in elementary school? These are real-life examples, and they not only affect those in the homes where they occur, but everyone in the community. After an information request, Teller County Department of Human Services informed me they received 176, excuse me, referrals from schools in 2022. 176. There are only 163 school days in the 2022-2023 school year. So who are we really protecting? Who are they really protecting? Regarding mass shootings, the prevailing conservative argument is that we do not have a gun problem in the United States, but a mental health problem. So what are we actually doing to protect our students and our teachers in our community? The school board aims to fund security in the schools, armed security, which I support. But armed security is a reactive measure in the event of a critical incident in our schools. What are we doing to prevent a tragedy of that scale in this community? The community I grew up in and the schools I attended are crumbling. Recently, my wife and I did something we previously never would have. We registered all five of our kids at a neighboring school district just down the hill. In February, when we registered, we were told by that school that they already had over 120 students from our school district register with them for next year. So later, when the school board tries to skew the enrollment numbers to justify taking resources away from the other schools and give them to a charter school, remember, it's not the schools that we're leaving. It's this school board and superintendent. Thank you.
I hope I don't butcher this name. It's Zahan, pardon me, Rogers, please.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Zahan Rogers, and I'm a sophomore here at Woodland Park High School. And I would like to offer an alternative perspective to the comments presented here at your last meeting on the topic of teacher retention. During that comment, it was stated that the current Board of Education offered our staff the highest raise in the history of the Woodland Park School District. I think it's important to note that in spite of that monetary incentive, we are suffering great staffing losses. This includes the resignations of almost our entire central office leadership team, including our chief academic officer, our executive director of business operations and HR, our director of technology and operations, our facilities manager, and our district mental health supervisor. At the high school alone, 40% of our certified teaching staff have resigned. That is 20 staff members, and that number is more than likely to grow. This includes six of our AP/Collge-level courses that are losing their teachers. And it is important to note that at least nine of those staff members are not just our teachers, but our coaches and activity sponsors as well. These losses will have a huge impact on our academics, athletics, and extracurriculars. My research finds that the district's typical turnover rate for the last 20 years averages between 15% to 20%. And many of these were new teachers or just retiring teachers. So the question we need to be asking is, why are so many more staff in the prime of their career leaving now in spite of the biggest pay raise the district has ever seen? It is my opinion that our Board of Education and superintendent have created a hostile work environment for our staff. I think our staff feel intimidated after the involuntary transfer of our librarian, Sarah Lee, and other incidents. It is also my opinion that staff don't feel trusted or heard, and they feel excluded from crucial district decision-making, the superintendent's election process, the adoption of the American birthright standards, and the move of the sixth graders back to the elementaries, which were all done without staff input. I also think staff feel silenced and unable to express their concerns due to the board modifying communication policies. Our teachers and coaches are the ones who educate us and train us to be better students, athletes, and people. We are losing teachers at an alarming rate, and I'm afraid we will struggle to attract new ones with comparable experience. Due to this, we are losing great students, athletes, and families to other districts. And the fact that a student has to be up here speaking about this should show that this is a disturbing trend that will affect our entire city. Also, due to these staffing losses, I am being forced to reconsider my place in this town, and I am also going to change districts after this year. Thank you for your time.
Bridget Curran?
Good evening. Thank you, Council, Mayor, Mayor Broton, for your dedication to the city that my family has called home since 1932. I'm going to share some points of concern that demonstrates taxpayer monies not benefiting our students. First, let's talk about the hiring of an interim superintendent who is being paid a full-time salary but has signed a contract allowing him to work a second job and only be on-site for a few days, a week. This arrangement raises questions about the superintendent's availability and commitment to our district, and whether we're getting the value we deserve for the taxpayer dollars being spent. Grants, the 22-23 school year, we received 30 grants totaling $2.2 million. That doesn't include the Esther Grants. That was three grants totaling $1.8 million. The 23-24 school year, as of early April, we've only applied for two grants totaling $250,000. The district mental health supervisor expected those decisions would result in losing $1.2 million in mental health grant money and the loss of 15 jobs. Additionally, there has been a decision to move the sixth grade out of the middle school and expand Merit's footprint in that building without disclosing the construction costs required for this move. This lack of planning and transparency and decision-making raises concerns about the financial burden that may be placed on our schools and taxpayers. Furthermore, the district has incurred significant legal fees averaging $11,000 per month last calendar year, not including the more than $32,000 spent on bringing Merit into the district. In the first three months of this year, the district has averaged $18,884 per month in legal fees, with suspicions that a significant portion of these expenses are related to defending the district in an open records lawsuit, which the district lost in the first ruling in March and is choosing to appeal at an even greater expense to the district. The lack of transparency and refusing to provide unredacted invoices for legal expenses raises questions about the purpose and necessity of these costs. Lastly, Superintendent Neal, last June, a special board meeting was called by Director Illingworth, where the board reached a separation agreement with the former superintendent. This agreement included a staggering $275,000 payout just to get him to resign. What's more alarming is that no reason was given for his departure despite emails obtained under Cora. That revealed he had complained to district lawyers about Illingworth's conduct as a board member. If the superintendent had resigned voluntarily, no payout would have been needed. It's pretty clear he was forced out by the board at enormous expense to our schools. Thank you for your attention to this pressing matter. Let us work together to ensure that our school district operates with integrity and the best interest of our students and taxpayers.
Carol Harvey?
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Carol Harvey, and I live at 515 Falcons Rest Place right here in Woodland Park. First, at the April 6 council meeting, a school district board director related at the current school board had miraculously addressed declining school district enrollment numbers. The director was not incorrect. The district enrollment numbers have declined over the past 10 years. Some decline maybe because parents were not satisfied with the district's performance, but census data, which I find more compelling, indicates another reason for the student leakage. The Colorado State Demography Office states that in 2010, the percentage of Teller County residents aged 0 to 4 was 4.7, and 2021, it was 3.6%. In 2010, the population aged 5 through 19 was 17.8%, and in 2021, it dropped 14.5%. The largest growing segment of our county is the over-65 age group. That's my playground peers, increasing by a number of nearly 11%. Well, these folks have generally aged out of the public school system. In other words, pupil enrollment has decreased commensurate with the decrease in the school-age population of the county. The current school board touts a 15% jump in enrollment this school year, presenting it as a sign that they're doing the right thing. It is an encouraging sign, but they're not mentioning that the number of students lost when Merit Academy, a contract school opened under the authority of Education Reenvision Board of Cooperative Education Services, or ER BOCs, which Superintendent Witt is also the CEO of, we lost a number of students to that new academy. But following the board's approval to authorize the academy into the school district as a charter school, the overall funded pupil count in the district increased from 1,739 to 1,997. It's not large growth, so it would appear to be a shell game. Second subject, in 2016, the school district experienced extreme financial difficulties. I won't go into the details of what had caused those, but in that same year, the city council approved an ordinance to address the community's interest in tax revenue and actually introduced a ballot question to the general election that asked the voters to consider an increase in the city's sales tax of 1.09, and those funds were to be used specifically for post-secondary preparation courses, innovative school programs, technologies, staff salaries, and facility maintenance. That was the exact wording of the ballot question. And in this concern for time, I'll go on to tell you what happened in 2022. 2022, the charter school, Merit Academy, was approved, and in their application, they asked for a per-pupil distribution of that sales tax. From their very website, they have declared that they have no statutory obligation to let any of us as taxpayers know how that money has been spent. They do have a flow number from the school budget that simply says that they received $325,000 of nearly $2 million that was collected by the city on behalf of the school district. And by the way, since that tax was passed, the school district has received almost $16 million. Per the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, you as a council have the sole legal authority to reduce any tax levied and collected by the city. This means the city council could decide to terminate that tax. Or you could also consider, you also have the power and the responsibility to reevaluate the tax to ensure its collection is used for its intended purpose and that it remains effective and relevant. These facts were known and communicated to the voters when they voted on that tax in 2016. A generous gift of over $16 million from taxpayers to the school district in the last seven years is a blessing. But I don't believe that taxpayers believed or anticipated that their tax dollars would be used by a charter school by its own admission has no requirement to let any of us know how they are using it. Thank you.
Next, we have Jamie Anderson.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. My name is Jamie Anderson, and I just want to thank you for the opportunity to share some information about the state of mental health in our community. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist, and I've been in private practice in Woodland Park for the past 10 years. In addition, I'm a mother of three adult children, all of whom have attended Woodland Park schools. During my career as a psychotherapist at Woodland Park, I've partnered with the school district on multiple occasions to meet the needs of children and families. It has been my experience that when most parents have a child that is struggling, they are open to support from private therapy and services at school. I have never, never had a parent complain about their child or teen receiving mental health services at school. In fact, in fact, it's often the opposite, as the parent wants more help than what is available. I have had teen clients directly benefit from life-saving services provided by the school district, including case management, referrals to private therapists, and psychiatric hospitals, referrals to school therapy groups, individual therapy provided by counselors or mental health professionals at school, and outreach to parents. These services save lives and will not be sufficiently provided without funding. I do not know how school counselors and administrators will be able to pick up the slack, and I can only imagine the heavy burden and burnout that will be caused if we decrease their funding. Research shows that children that receive social, emotional, mental, and behavioral health support do better academically. If a child is depressed, anxious, or in an active state of trauma, they are unable to learn effectively. The most vulnerable students in our community are the ones that will be greatly impacted by reducing mental health services in schools, but it will affect all of our students. I was shocked, confused, and deeply concerned when I learned that mental health funding and grant funding is being cut from our schools. I'm saddened to know that our children in our community and their parents will suffer greatly by this decision. I have worked with parents suffering heartache and pain parenting a child with mental health needs and the desperation that creates. I have also seen positive changes and improvements when children and families get treatment. One teen suicide is one too many and an unacceptable number. One teen suicide in our community affects us in indescribable ways. One suicide increases the likelihood that other depressed and struggling youth consider it as an option. I have attended funerals of teens that have died by suicide with all three of my sons, and I have seen the pain and suffering it has caused them, the families, and the community as a whole. As a nation, we have a mental health epidemic on our hands, and we have frequent school shootings. No one thinks it will happen to their school, especially those in small, safe towns. Each community needs to do what they can to promote mental health treatment to address this issue. Mental health issues are prevalent in our community and in our country. I just want to end by saying, over the past four years, the number of deaths of teen suicide in our community, to my knowledge, have been zero. And I think that's because of the programs we have in our school district, the mental health treatment we're providing to children, and teens, and families. And lastly, I just want to say that we can pay now by funding prevention and treatment, or we can pay later by watching some of our children die by suicide or possibly homicide, and the pain it leaves in its wake. Thank you.
Jason Friesmer?
Greetings. I want to thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jason Friesmer. I am a licensed professional counselor and a licensed addiction counselor. I'm the chief clinical officer of a behavioral health organization in Colorado Springs called Peaks Recovery Centers. I also graduated from Woodland Park High School back in the 1900s, 1993, to be specific. Both of my kids graduated from this school. I have nieces, nephews, cousins who have all graduated from Woodland Park High School. What prompted me to address the board were the comments by Mr. David Illingworth at this podium two weeks ago. He talked pretty clearly about his concern about the safety of students, and I couldn't agree with him more about that. In fact, he referenced specifically a school shooting in Denver, talking about the need for more SROs and other security that a school did not take. He called it, quote, "a luxury Denver has, a luxury they casually toss aside, and a luxury they are scrambling to fix." And I want to talk about that for a second. We, as a community and as a country, we are suffering from a significant pandemic following a pandemic. What we have come to call deaths of despair, which are suicide but also include drug overdose, because those can be hard to tell if it's suicide or drug overdose, is rampant. For the first time in my career, we have had people come to Peaks Recovery Centers, begin to get the help they need, and then tell us that they came to Peaks with the intention to kill themselves there, to do it away from their family. I've never seen this before. And it's required a significant amount of effort on the part of the mental health field to address these issues. And I want to just go real quick. People are mentioning the lack of funding to the school. Oh, man, I'm going to go over time. No, I know you don't love that. But I want to mention that documents obtained through Cora requests indicate that the school has foregone $1.2 million in grants for mental health. And that's going to cost us 15 mental health professionals within our school district, and that's very concerning. As Mr. Craig Johnson, who I don't know, mentioned, schools are a protective factor for our kids. There are so many situations that occur within the community that the school is a safe place for people to receive that support. These deaths of despair that I mentioned earlier, a lot of them come from deeply rooted shame, toxic shame, which I could talk for an hour about. It bore all of you for sure, but that matters. And the solution to that, as Carol Greenstreet mentioned, is community, right? And it isn't about, some of it's about security. I want to mention that part. Like, I've worked very closely with the crisis response team in Colorado Springs, which is a police officer, a social worker, and a paramedic. And nothing is more effective than people that understand mental health but also have the authority to back that up in a response to crisis situations. And so what I'm concerned about, I'd like to reflect back Mr. Illingworth's words a little bit, that I'm worried that if we don't, a lack of ongoing and consistent mental health intervention for our students, I'm afraid we're going to look at it as a luxury Woodland Park has, a luxury we've casually tossed aside, and a luxury I feel we will be scrambling to fix. Thank you. That's all.
Ashley Shields?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your time, and I get to be super short with the microphone, so thanks for letting me be here. My name is Ashley Shields, and I am the Suicide Prevention Project Coordinator for Teller County, and I'm also representing the Teller County Mental Health Alliance here today. The Teller County Mental Health Alliance strives to increase access to services, fill gaps, and break down any barriers to accessing mental health supports. What we have found through a recent systems mapping project that will be released in April 30th, Teller County has insufficient access and numbers of psychiatrists, psychologists, social workers, and other professionals to meet the growing needs. 70% to 80% of youth who receive those services do so within the schools. Schools are particularly critical in identifying and supporting students with mental health issues. Without early identification, intervention, and a full continuum of care in partnership with community resources, the impact reaches far beyond the school system. Next school year, when teachers and support staff recognize trauma responses or behavioral problems in the classroom, for example, they will no longer have the tools of mental health professionals in the building to direct students to, or have the capacity to ensure that the child receives appropriate support. They're going to be overwhelmed with student caseloads that compromise quality and result in children with unmet needs. This creates one of the greatest vulnerabilities for school safety. Students will no longer have access to free mental health care, as you've heard, and we're going to see, as a result of that, we're going to see worsening attendance, higher rates of suspensions and expulsions, an increase in mental health crises at home, and students are going to turn to more harmful solutions such as substance use and self-harm more often. Continuous and sustainable crisis and emergency preparedness, response, and recovery planning and training will fall on community organizations that are already overtaxed and parents that may already be at their wits' end. Mental health issues in our community are complex and challenging, but by coming together, we can increase our understanding of the issues facing our community and working together on tangible actions to make a difference for our residents and our outstanding community partners that are focused on mental health and wellness. I am asking the city council to sign a proclamation recognizing May of 2023 as Mental Health Awareness Month. This provides a perfect opportunity for the city of Woodland Park to shine a spotlight on local and helpful mental health resources and information on local programs or initiatives. The Woodland Park City Council can play a key role towards awareness and resource connections for children, youth, and families who may be struggling. It is up to the entire community to ensure that Woodland Park is a thriving city, where their needs for physical, mental, and social health are secured, where children and youth have the resilience to deal with the growing challenges that they face. There is no health without mental health, and the Teller County Mental Health Alliance is beside you every step of the way to provide the tools and support you need to make this happen. Thank you. to provide the tools and support you need to make this happen. Thank you.
Michael Stewart?
Now, I got fifteen extra seconds because I'm ready. Fine. As you can see, we're painting a much less rosy picture.
What's your name, sir?
Uh, Michael Stewart. Um, Dr. Michael Stewart, please. Um, of the Woodland Park School District, I'll call the district that Mr. Illingworth made at last week's city council meeting. I'm, uh, Dr. Michael Stewart, resident and taxpayer of RE2, Vietnam Air veteran. I attended several board meetings and came to the conclusion elections have consequences, that this board only listens to those that share that, their ideology. At last week's city council meeting, Mr. Illingworth introduced the new interim superintendent, Mr. Witt. He lauded Mr. Witt's experience, that he had been president of the Jefferson County School Board, but he forgot to mention that Mr. Witt had been recalled from that position. In addition, I add that Mr. Witt's educational experience only include a bachelor's degree in math and some online Bible classes. The man they forced out had a PhD, impeccable resume, superintendent at several other places before he came here. I could tell you, he did not want to leave here, but he left here. Mr. Illingworth mentioned positive gains in enrollment under this board. The increased numbers are from the addition of Merritt Academy to the district, a school based on similar ide- ideology, again, that word, to that of this board. At this meeting, and one of them was here tonight, two upset parents rose to speak. One said that he was a pro-life gun owner, but through the actions of this board, he would be withdrawing his five children. The other said that she was very upset with the actions of this board and would be drawing her three children. I have discovered, and I really admire the young woman that had some really good numbers. I was, I wasn't so good as, um, with the numbers, and I thought I was a research scientist, very upset with the actions of the board, and would, would be withdrawing her three children. I have that, um, discovered that many parents, well over a hundred families, are trying to enroll their children in another district in our area. This is in addition to those that have already left and those that may be applying to even other schools. I believe this school board should serve all students and provide an ideology, ideology-free workplace for faculty and staff. At least thirty to forty percent of the current teachers and staff are leaving or retiring doing, due to a hostile work environment. At a past meeting, one woman stood up. A beloved longtime librarian reminded the board to please listen to the student. That's all she said. And for that, she was subsequently fired. I mentioned to an acquaintance and local supporter of this board that the teacher seemed to be afraid to speak to me. His response was that they better be. The teachers are afraid for their jobs, can't say a word, or even basically talk to anyone about this situation for fear of dismissal. There you have it. Funny enrollment numbers and success stories, very rosy. Students, faculty, faculty, and staff are leaving in droves. Unjustified firings, lawsuits, and boy, are they willing to take them on with our taxpayer money. Hostile work environment. Teachers afraid for their jobs, free speech, speech, that's where I'd add a nasty word, and you guys would get mad at me. Court case coming. Worst of all, strict conservative ideology when it should be ideology-free. This school's in huge trouble. I've had many jobs, many states in my life. I'm now retired. I've been in the service, I've been in, uh, I taught high school, government jobs, um, uh, universities, several universities, never ran into ideology difference. I don't care what you believe in, but I don't really want to talk about it. You're entitled to your beliefs, and so am I. That's what I believe in, not what this board is doing. So now I wish we could have some questions, because then we can really start having fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Roschek?
Hello, Mayor and Council. I am, uh, Scott Jason Roschek. I'm resident of Teller County, and I'm also alumni. I also graduated in nineteen hundreds. I'm going to read. I am here to tell you the great things that no one else has told you about Woodland Park. Miles Tuttle, he is leaving our district. He has secured six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal money to purchase fifteen hundred Chromebooks. This will free up monies for robotics program for elementary schools. We also have that same administrator that has bought, saw that there was a lack of bus drivers and bought two activity buses so that our coaches and our teachers could drive those students to events. We also are getting new bleachers at the middle school this year, and next year, we will have new bleachers at our high school. Yes, that is right, because those whole bleachers are horrible. The administration, also led by Tina Cassons, she has added monies for the spring breaks. Um, and so, an example, she had eighty kids skiing for free. How cool is that? She also has kids going to swimming at Golden Bell, and then, do you know, not, she has nine thousand dollars. So if you have a kid that wants to go to a summer camp, you just got to talk to her. Wait, she won't be here. One of the teacher awards we have won this year is from American Vacuum Society Supporting Physics. That was given to, for excellence in secondary science education to, uh, Alicia Meyer, Allison Meyer, sorry. Our forensics and speech coach, Bill Brown, he's won so many awards for leadership from Chassa and Le- and the Lifetime Award Speech and Debate. We have three kids going to Nationals, and they were all state champions. For the thirty-second time, they will be going to Nationals. That's an amazing feat. We had five state placers in welding. One of them was a young woman, Alexis Gallagher. How cool is that? Mr. Adamson's done a great job. We also have added industrial certifications for welding and cybersecurity, so these young adults that are attending our school district can join the workforce immediately if needed. There was a wonder kind, it's an art show in Manito, and I got to go to that, and there were some really cool artists. I'm going to tell you, Stacey Ray, RR's are amazing at Woodland Park. The students at Woodland Park last year qualified for four, over four million dollars in scholarships to go on and continue their education. The scores of the SAT have grown for the last five years, every year. That's pretty good growth. Our student athletes, because they're so smart now at SATs. First of all, let's start with the football team. First time in twenty-one years, they were state qualifiers with two all-state players. I'm a little biased on the next one. Uh, four A, not two A or three A, four A volleyball, five-time regional in a row, regional qualifier, one-time regional champion, and my wife took the team to state for the first time in thirty years. We also had two all-state players. The boys and girls cross-country team both qualified for state in seventeen years. That hasn't happened. Cheerleading, they won the three A state champion. We had one qualifier for golf and set a new two-day low score. Three A girls, state soccer qualifier in two thousand and twenty-two. The boys wrestling, this one's also close to me, because I'm alumni and was a wrestler. We had two kids last year take third place, and then Mr. Brady Hankin, for the first time ever, went to four finals, won three state championship, and was a runner-up. That's a stud. For the first time ever, we had girls wrestling, two qualifiers for state, two senior wrestler, women wrestlers will be going to college. What an opportunity. In track, last year, we had seven placers in state. This year, we will break, uh, all-time record. We'll have more than seventeen athletes go. Twenty-one of them have already qualified. We are competitive in ice hockey. We have boys and girls swimming, and at this moment, this is sad, but I believe we have eight, maybe ten, coaches that will resign or will not be returning. At the middle school, principal goings. Warm welcome Wednesdays. If you haven't seen that, it's amazing. High fives, hugs, kids getting ready in the middle of the week. And then sports, Merritt and Woodland Park come together, and at Columbine, a true special community, they updated their whole playground because of one parent, and it was all parent-driven. At Gateway, they have a, they have become a lead leader in me school. I'm almost done. I will be fast really quick, Mayor. Teaching the Seven Habits of Success to become independent thinkers and amazing leaders. And finally, Summit has Destination Imagination. They are going to Nationals in lovely Kansas City, Missouri. And we did add Merritt. What are all the great things we have done as a school district? Thank you.
Thank you.